To begin the open session, it being March 19th, 2024, I will reconvene the meeting of the select board after the executive session. Note, this meeting is being televised streamed or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Michael Roche, is anyone else? Note that the use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505. The password is B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. I will note that Peter Meyer, Select Board Member Meyer, and Select Board Member Jared McDonald are excused this evening. Moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. I'll salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the Select Board vision and mission statements.
Go for it. I have it.
Go ahead.
Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Mission, I'll take that. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Is there anyone signed up for public comment on non-agenda items? Recognize Bob Dwyer.
Good evening.
Ah, let me give my little spiel here. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posturing requirements of the open meeting law. Thank you. You may begin.
Good evening. Once again, Bob Dwyer, Chair of your Cable, Internet, and Telecommunications Advisory Committee. I have another agenda item later on in the agenda, but this is off the agenda. You may have seen the article in the Enterprise that Falmouth is now entertaining an offer from a company called Boundless LLC, which is a fiber optic design-build operator from Portland, Maine, I believe, to build their entire fiber optic network and operate it at no cost to the town. I was on a call Friday and identified myself as Chair of this Bourne Committee, and a representative from Boundless says, oh, we're going to be contacting Bourne very soon. So expect a contact from, I don't have names, but again, it's Boundless, and their former name was Tilson LLC, who had done work formerly for Falmouth. That's all.
Thank you. Before we begin the next item, I will report out on the executive session. We did have updates on some litigation in the town. We own, the only motions that we took were to approve and release the minutes of January 3rd, 2023, March 21st, 2023, and June 6th, 2023. The next item is reintroduction of Town Council. And if Brian and Chris, you want to come? I guess you have to use the podium if you're going to speak at all, or we could move a microphone down for you. I should have thought about that.
That'll get cumbersome real quick.
Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Hello again to members of the board, as well as the member of the public who are here tonight, and whoever else may be off in Zoom land. I don't want to forget about them. For all those who aren't aware, so everyone who's out there, my name is Brian Bertram. I work at the law firm Harrington Heap. You can introduce yourself, Chris, if you'd like.
I'm Chris Brown. I also work with Brian at the same law firm.
Okay. And, you know, we are here tonight as sort of the firm's representatives. I serve as the lead on the engagement and basically make sure that things run as they should and interact with the town. But I, whenever we present to a board on what we do and how we do it in any context, we really do emphasize that, you know, our services are provided as a firm for a reason. And that, you know, while I may be the lead and Chris may deal in a lot of certain areas for the town, you know, at the end of the day, we readily encourage and hope that town staff, town officials, if you know that a lawyer works on something in our firm in a specific area, that you just reach out to that person. And I think that happens quite a bit in Bourne, too. So we're here tonight to really reintroduce ourselves. We came on in this engagement at a time of some change in the town. You know, I came on as new Town Council, and as I did back then, I'd like to say now that I was really gratified and impressed with the way former Town Council helped me at every stage of that transition. I'm really appreciative of him in doing that. And then shortly after we came on, we had a new Town Administrator as well. So we've really all been sort of, maybe it's a drawback, maybe it's a benefit, maybe it's both. But as we've sort of, you know, embarked on this change, we've been sort of figuring out how processes are supposed to work and where things can be improved, and basically how to manage legal services to the town. During that time period, you know, the firm has changed a little bit. You know, I was pitched as the lead before. Ray Miaries was on that pitch team at the time. For anyone who's unfamiliar with Ray, and that's usually no one who met him because he was a very big personality. Ray, after many, many years, and to my disbelief, because I never thought it would actually happen, ended up retiring. He is now spending his time with his grandkids. I do see him on a regular basis. He was a mentor to me in this field, and I can report that he's doing well. And then later on, the person who was in charge of the Labor and Employment and served as my backup, Alex Rubin, she ended up leaving, not because anyone wanted her to go, and we dearly tried to keep her, but her husband is also a lawyer. You can only imagine the arguments in a two-lawyer household. But her husband is a lawyer, and he got an opportunity to help his firm open a new office in Albany, New York. And so Alex, as wonderful as she is, actually tried to work remotely from Albany to stay at the firm. And I think after a period of time, that just didn't end up working out for her. So other than that, we really are the same firm that we started out with. We pride ourselves in not having actually a lot of turnover in the lawyers that work for our firm. You know, our name recently changed because it was a year after Ray retired, and the name that went on it, Chris Heap, has never worked for another law firm. You know, he clerked in the land court, he got hired by the firm, and he's been there ever since. And, you know, aside from that name change and a few new fancy colors in some of the firm's marketing materials, nothing else changed. I want to make sure that everyone understands that this was not a merger, there was no act, nothing like that. It was, okay, Ray retired a year ago, we're thinking about making the advertising and the marketing materials, they needed to refresh anyway. Chris has been around a long time, so his name got put on the letterhead, the colors changed, we're still located in the same office with the same other attorneys, operating the same way we have for many, many years. So that's pretty much, you know, it I have in terms of the reintroduction. Chris, I should give you a few minutes. I don't know that you have as much opportunity to speak to the board, but you can sing your own praises. I will say that, you know, Chris becoming involved when Alex left was a deliberate choice. He had already been very deeply involved in some of the police headquarters building issues that we had because he was a construction-
Gonna keep the microphone. People at home, it's not for here, it's for the people at home.
Because he is a construction litigator, and it just so happened that we were very fortunate that he's also a very experienced labor and employment lawyer. So he already had the working relationships with town staff, and it was very easy to have him sort of transition into that role.
Thank you. Well, he left me very little to say, so I will be brief. Yeah, I mean, most of what I've done since I've been involved with Bourne has been behind the scenes, working with your officials, but we have a great working relationship. You know, a lot of what I am involved in is, you know, employment-related issues, but also, to Brian's point, construction-related issues, too. So, you know, and I look forward to continuing to work with town officials on those areas.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? These two members were not there when, here when we interviewed this firm, so.
I think we've had plenty of interactions.
You know, I am firmly aware of my place in the world, and usually when the lawyer shows up, it's because there's a problem. So I do my best to largely keep a low profile, but, you know, what we do is unavoidable. And sometimes it is, it is fun, and it is interesting. And, you know, the board, members of the community, are going to get an opportunity to learn another member of our firm's name pretty well, Ivria Freed-
Yes.
-who does a lot of our marijuana work and has worked with many towns implementing their bylaws. And as we all know, only a few days ago, the MLU made its approval of our bylaws official. So we'll be getting into that. So there really are some wonderful folks. Ivria, Jenny Merrill has appeared for this board from time to time on land use dispositions and things of that nature. You know, she's one of those folks that I think staff see a lot more than even boards because she works behind the scenes on that stuff. But I really look forward, you know, to any input the board has to on how we, you know, we've been here a couple of years now. I think everyone's had an opportunity to sort of see how things may be working or not working. My favorite phrase, and maybe it's a little unusual for a lawyer, is that I do not have a monopoly on being right. And I readily encourage people, if there's a way we can improve what we're doing, to let me know. You know, I'm in two industries. I'm in the legal industry, and I'm in the service industry. And I'm very aware that I'm in both. And I want to make sure that we give you the best possible service we can give you because that's why we do what we do, and it's why we chose to do what we do.
And one thing I want to mention is that, as part of what they provide for us as services is, I think, like, three trainings or two or three trainings a year. So as a board, we should think about if there's any particular things that we, they'd like to do a deep dive in, either with us or with other committees, or I think you did, when you first came on, I think there was an open meeting law thing that we did, so.
We did a very large sort of double, we did it two weeks. It was open meeting law, ethics, public records law, sort of the, you know, the greatest hits of things that staff members or board members or everyone else should just know and refresh themselves with. Yeah, if you guys have ideas for trainings, whether it's that more general stuff, or if a board or a committee has sort of a specific thing they want to learn about, I love trainings. I think it's a great way to get down to meet people, to understand what's going on at the board and committee level or at the staff level. You know, we don't charge for it, per the retainer, so let me, you know, give you the push in that area. But it's, you know, it has value, too. I mean, when we build those relationships, issues tend to surface quicker, we can give you better service. So, you know, if you have ideas, I don't know, whatever procedure the board wants to follow for that, but I'd really love to hear them.
Yeah, sounds good. Anything else? Thank you for coming in.
Always my pleasure.
Doing spending the last hour and a half with you. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Bourne Public School Department Budget Presentation.
Just gonna take a moment to queue it up for you.
Okay.
Do you have the agenda? Um, yes, I can't believe.
While we're waiting for this, would we like to move up to the consent agenda? Because I see Mr. Lindberg in the audience, and-
He's agreeing.
Yeah. Sure. So item 10 is the consent agenda. And our consent agenda includes item A, accept donations to the council on aging, which are $25 donation in memoriam of Michael and Nancy Manley and Priscilla Bailey, and a $50 donation from Florence and John Burke, seasonal food license, seasonal food and general licenses, as listed in the packet, appointment of Joseph Spinelli to the Bylaw Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2026, and to the ZBA as an associate member with a term ending June 30th, 2024. Friends of the Bourne Psychic Fair requesting use of the community building gym and kitchen on April 27th, 2024, with the rain date of May 4th, 2024. And authorize the town clerk to opt out, vote by mail for May 21st, 2024 Annual Town Election. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, A through E, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Anne Marie, to actually approve the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. It's unanimous, 3-0-0. So I think we're all set. Friends of the Bourne Psychic Fair have been approved by the Select Board. I believe they have to be approved by the trustees of the community building as well. Okay, you're all set. You're welcome.
That was a good call, very efficient.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I also have Jordan Geist here to answer any and all questions that you have at the end. And I do want to say this is also on our website, if you'd like to view it later.
For everyone, this is Carrie Ann Quinlin-Joe, the Superintendent of Bourne Public Schools.
Thank you, I appreciate that introduction as well. So tonight, we will have our general budget presentation. It's the same presentation that the school committee received in March, early March. So you'll see how our budget has developed, our assumptions and scenarios, our major priorities. Then you'll see each school specifically. That piece I'll go a little quickly on because that was the longer portion we heard from each principal, we were able to ask questions. And then you'll see our summary snapshots and overall recommendations. So our budget is always developed involving multiple stakeholders at the school level, our administrators. We also have, as you know, a budget and facilities subcommittee that gives a lot of information, and one of our members is here tonight, Maureen Fuller. Just want to thank her for coming. And then we also work hand-to-hand with town administration as we're going through the process. This year, we were asked to prepare a little earlier than usual, so we did meet, I believe, starting in late October, and then had some, our first budget assumptions in early November. So we do look at multiple lenses, district-wide, site-based, programmatic, and then right drilling down to individual student needs, especially for our students who have very specific needs. Our timeline, as I said, was a little bit accelerated this year, but I do think it gave us a clearer picture of where we were earlier. And as you can see, it ends hopefully with a positive town meeting in May, but you all know all of these timelines, so we'll breeze through this section. So our revenue assumptions, we pull from a few different places when we're building this whole budget. And what you'll see is the general budget, as usual, and that's our ask to the town, and then you'll see all of our offsets. And we have pie charts to show you at the end because the entire budget, what is it called, the fully loaded budget, really is about $4 million more than we ask from the town. So we're using offsets from school choice and our different tuition programs. We're looking at our local, state, and federal grants, they're called entitlement grants. The big one this year, even though it's in parentheses and very small, is that for many years, we had the ESER funds to rely on to augment our budget. And if you recall, those funds in the first iterations paid for very pandemic-related things like PPE or test kits, more custodial hours for deep cleaning. It was kind of that very hands-on, very pandemic-specific. But over time, we received ESER 3 and 4, excuse me, 2 and 3. There's no 4. We wish there was a 4, but. And the 2 and 3 also paid mostly for things that were going to help our kids to accelerate, to kind of climb out of the learning gaps that they were in. And so what we're pleased we could do is, even after that time, we were not faced with a fiscal cliff that was insurmountable. You'll see many towns right now are going for a two-and-a-half override, they're really in a dire place. But over time, we were able to budget in a way that got us to a good place, although we do have to say it was a very difficult budget year to do this. Because some of our things that we spent on were really to help children to change the way that we do schooling. And so if you've heard of the WIN periods, or Common Planning Time, or Benchmarking, those are really specific ways that we're helping our teachers and our students to overcome those learning gaps and get even better. But it does cost money through staffing. So our ESER funds went toward library media specialists who also did lots of in-depth work with our children, ESL teachers, interventionists. So there's a lot of different staff members that got built into the budget over the course of those three years that we now still have, so that's a very good thing. So if you go to the next slide. And then our planning assumptions, we want to maintain these high-quality programs, meet the needs of all learners. We want to keep our class sizes at a manageable place, be inclusive and have equitable practices. And we've had a really big push over the past three years especially, going on for inclusive practices with special ed. And so what that means is we want every child to be in the least restrictive environment. We want them to be with their peers as much as possible. And so we do an inclusionary model that has more co-teachers than the past. And then lastly, we want to support our three-year district strategy and our school improvement plans. In case you haven't seen it, this is a small chart of our district strategy. It spells out BPS, so Building Community, Promoting Equity, and Striving for Excellence. And then hyperlinked here, again, if you care to look at it a little later on the website, are all of our school improvement plans. The strategy is a three-year plan, next year will be year three, and our school improvement plans are one-year plans with very strong metrics. So we're moving that needle, and our budget is what supports that work. So the first slide you see is Bourndale. We like to show the site-based budget. There's, other than being interesting, the number, it kind of depends on how much staff are there, kind of where the staff are on the salary scale. But what these bullets show you are all the many things that this budget will pay for. You'll see a common theme with a few. So some of that are the resources that we've brought in in the past few years, like American Reading Company, WIN, which stands for What I Need, and CPT, which stands for Common Planning. We say we always have alphabet soup in education. But in essence, these things are giving children exactly what they need at the right time. So if you picture six classrooms of grade-one students, at a certain point in time, all of those children get reshuffled into 12 different places, whether they be working with a special ed teacher, a reading specialist, the art teacher. So they're really getting exactly what they need. And those cycles change every six to eight weeks. So it's a really neat, neat program. There's many things on this slide, but we'll go right to Bourne Intermediate School. You can see their site-based budget. For this budget, something that is new, it's kind of the only new, actually reallocated position, there are no new positions, but what's reallocated is an ESL teacher for that school. We've seen an increase in ESL. We all know that we had newcomers with us for half of the year, but we're not seeing that need go down significantly over the course of the next few years. So we're keeping that person in the budget. She's also a certified regular ed teacher, and so she'll be an ESL interventionist just for Bourne Intermediate. Bourne Middle School, they're continuing a lot of the implementation of their high-quality curriculum materials. We've onboarded an awful lot of curriculum materials in the past four years in almost every single subject area, so our teachers have worked really, really hard. And you'll see there continued support of utilizing iXL, which is kind of a practice and a benchmarking for kiddos, that's an online computer piece. And then everything from keeping our media specialists and offering all kinds of after-school and enrichment activities. And then lastly, Bourne High School, where we're reinventing education. There's a lot that's been happening at Bourne High School in the past few years, and so we want to keep that ball rolling with our 18 AP course offerings, with our internships for every single senior next year. You've probably seen that program grow from a handful to half the class this year to now, next year's seniors, everyone will have the opportunity for an internship. And then, of course, our three innovation pathways that we're very proud of, designated through the Department of Ed. And we actually have up to eight pathways that students can take, not all designated, but all laid out for them to be able to have high success. You can see all the many things that are part of that. The next one? So we have some reallocations. Like I said, there are no new positions, but we are reducing one of our two interventionists at BIS, and we are replacing it with the ESL-directed support interventionist. And then at the high school, we're reducing a PE position, again, due to class sizes, and we're adding a physics and engineering position. So as we, as we see the cohorts and the class changes, we're making those changes. Programmatically, we're continuing all of our programs. We're building on them year after year. And the last thing that we're really proud of, early on in this year, our Budget Facility Subcommittee voted to really make a big move regarding equity. So next year, we're eliminating all of our activity fees for athletics, drama, for anything that made students pay. And we always had tuitions, we always had scholarships for kiddos, but being a kid that had to make choices, right? My family didn't come from means, I don't want a family to be put in that situation where they say, no, don't ask for it because, you know, we're embarrassed about that. So we really want to make sure every kid can just join the sport, do the drama club, just be part of it because we really believe in those learning experiences. And the other thing, we're eliminating our transportation fees for our high schoolers because especially if the bridges become an issue, we want as many kids to jump on that bus as possible because that's going to be the best way to get them over the bridge. The next slide. Again, these slides are very text-rich, and I know many of you will take the time to look at it, but what you'll see kind of in the next two slides is a continuation, a continuation, a continuation. And that doesn't mean we're not doing anything new, it means we're building on the foundation that we laid, starting four years ago when the pandemic started. So there's a lot of moving it forward, getting to the next goalpost, until you see a lot of continuation. And on the next one, you can see all the professional development offerings. Many of these were in year two or three, we've still got a little ways to go. We have some really high-quality consultants that come and work with our teachers in all aspects, and that was a large piece of what ESER paid for as well, to have some really high-quality resources, materials, and consultants. On the next one, you'll see our technology budget. As you know, we were very thankful to put in our budget a few years ago, our IT Director, who is phenomenal, and he, and his team, because we do have a technology committee that's district-wide, has really invested a lot, and through the help of the town, we've really been able to bring technology right to the cutting edge, especially at our, at our high school, our middle school, and throughout all of our schools. There's an awful lot going on, including really needed Wi-Fi upgrades and a lot of safety upgrades as well. So we've done that through various different grants, and we're pretty proud of it. The next one is meeting the needs of all learners. And so you can see in here, in Bourne, we've, we've had for quite a few years a lot of really important social, emotional, and counseling supports. Most people don't realize we have at least two- Most people don't realize, we have at least two adjustment counselors in every school, and at the high school, we have two adjustment counselors and two guidance counselors. We really believe in that, and that's one reason why our schools operate so well and our kiddos are in a really good place. We also have all of these great things happening with special education. ESY stands for Extended School Year, if you're wondering more alphabets in there. Next year, there's a brand-new IEP process that's very child-centered, that's really about looking at the child's assets, not as much as their deficits. And so we have a full rollout of training prepared for next year as early adopters. And then we're going to continue all of our student services and supports that are so important. Lastly, as I already mentioned, for our English language learners, we're continuing with three teachers. When I first came on board, it was the first year, we had two teachers, and then we'll have three, and that will suit, we believe that will suit our needs for next year, but as we're seeing across the Cape, one of my colleagues, I believe it was Dennis Yarmuth, put seven ESL teachers in his budget for next year. So compared to that, we think that we're doing pretty well regarding budgeting. All right, and now the fun pie charts. Here, Mr. Geis. So people like to see kind of where our money goes. The bulk of it goes towards salaries. The student services, the bulk of that piece is also salaries, because that would capture our special ed teachers and all of those things. You can see there's a slice in there for maintenance and utilities, transportation, and then a small piece comes out, so you can see where information technology is, textbooks, our school committee lines, which include our legal fees, excuse me, and then PE and athletics. So that's kind of our entire budget in a snapshot there. And then the next one takes a look at our offsets. So like I said, $4,525,292 is not being asked of the town through our different offset accounts, and that's school choice. Circuit breaker, which is a special education reimbursement, it always comes to us a year later, so we use it as a holding and then put it against the current budget. Revolving, which could be many different smaller accounts, our state and federal aid and our military mitigation, or what they call Federal Reserve, because we service the children on Joint Base Cape Cod. So that's the amount of money that we're offsetting into FY '25, and you can see that it is slightly lower than the FY '24 offset, but many of those offsets in '24 included the ESER funding. So that's important to note that we didn't have that account to draw from. We're getting to the very end of the charts. So we like to show a year-over-year increase, but I would like to call your attention to FY '24 and '25 and something that might look different if you remembered our presentation last year. So because the Board of Select was so gracious in helping us to secure $100,000 for the Special Ed Reserve Fund, we added that to FY '24, and that's what adjusted these numbers. So what you're seeing here in FY '25 was originally going to say, before that $100,000, was going to say a 3.23 increase, but now because this year is higher, it looks lower, and so it's actually a 2.83 increase in real money. The next slide has a hyperlink to our full budget spreadsheet, that's also been on our website since, I believe it was the last Monday in February, when we had our posting before our budget hearings, you can hyperlink to that and see all the many hundreds of lines, you can see year-over-year, you can see the increases, the decreases, and the offsets, anything that has a color in it is coming out of an offset. And then lastly, we've got our grand totals. So this is the operating budget that we're requesting for FY '25, it's $26,652,537. As I said, it's a 2.83 increase, or $734,174 over the year before. And it was difficult to get this budget into the place that we needed it to be, and we worked with the town, our original ask was, again, it was earlier on in the process, but encompassed, let me get you the exact number. It was $223,000 more than what you see right here. And again, we did that through looking at our offsets, trying to be conservative with things, but I do have to say the costs are still rising everywhere, especially the out-of-district, which we talked about about a month ago, it's a moving target, we're still getting in the increases for next year from the different agencies. So we'll do our best to stay within that number. And then I believe the next, the next to last slide is next steps. We're hoping for the state to finalize their budget earlier rather than later, we hope it won't be a July or August deal again. We'll continue to refine, and we hope that we will, you know, have a very positive outcome at the spring meeting. And now, I'll be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Just a comment, we appreciate you being so diligent and fiscally responsible. It's difficult to do, especially when it comes to the education of our children, you know, in both our schools. You know, I spent a lot of time on school committee, and it's not easy to ensure that you're providing the best with a finite amount of money, but clearly, in my experiences, and I stay close in touch with the children of Bourne and their education, that it's been outstanding, and to do it with a budget that, you know, is tight, but kudos to the schools and for what they're doing, what you're doing, yeah. And I love the new programming, I love that the kids aren't paying an activity fee, and, you know, I mean, books and being in front of a teacher is important, but a lot of children are motivated to come to school and work hard because they get to go out on that field, or they get to go into that drama, you know, the theater, or they get to go into the robotics room or whatever, and have these after-school activities that build even more of the total child, so that's great.
Thank you, we agree.
Yeah, same here, I think it's amazing, I think we're very lucky here in Bourne to have such a wonderful school system, and the work you've done is amazing, so thank you. And I love that my grandson's in the picture there. Really exciting, really, really exciting to see his face in the little, in the little crew there, so.
No, I didn't intend for that, but that's great.
So cute, I was like, hey, this is my grandson.
I love to put the pictures, because this is what this budget is paying, this is literally for the children, and so to see their smiling faces, you could see pie charts, you know, although they're beautiful pie charts, Mr. Geis, you could see them until you put them in the face, but to see the children, I think that's what really counts.
Amazing, see them smiling, so happy.
Well, I'm going to reiterate, I think the equity piece of activity and transportation fees being eliminated, I think that's, I think that's really great, and it's bothered me for a long time, so I'm really happy that that's happening, because it can have a big impact on a family and a child, and, you know, so I think that's really awesome. I think that the challenges of coming out of COVID, I think it's very difficult for people to understand what the gaps are that were created and how much there is to overcome. And we really appreciate the creativity of the department in some of the ways you're programming things and getting the right thing for the right children at the right time, so. And we appreciate your coming in with a budget that helps us have a balanced budget, so we do appreciate that all, so thank you very much. Anything from the audience, any public comment?
I have one more question.
Okay.
Just if, in the ideal world, what particular area do you find needs more funding? Any?
I would probably, I would probably keep more support someplace around interventionists, because again, those were ESER-funded, we're bringing some down. I would probably have a little more wiggle room in the special ed world, because we're still, like, we get new needs every day.
Right.
And so going into a budget year and not having the foundational pieces where we know, okay, we could support that if it came our way, yeah, it's tight.
How's the 18-plus program?
It's going great, again, you know, children graduate all the time, you know, they re-graduate. But yeah, there were points in times where that was a tuition, things were coming in through revolving account, but now it really supports our kiddos who were with us, have graduated, and then can stay till '22. So yeah, I think it's going well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate the presentation. Next is Mr. Forday.
Thank you.
Upper Cape Tech.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You know, I was like, hey, wait a minute.
What is he, first grade?
Yeah, first grade.
First grade.
Thank you. He's a little smile.
He looks like he gets spoiled by his grandmother.
Yes, he do. Love him so much. It's funny, he's in a game, he's in a wrinkle, I'm like, we're going to put those in the dryer.
Thank you.
My thank you.
Very, very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There we go. Madam Chair, Select Board, thank you so, so much for having me here this evening and allowing me to present our budget. I'd first like to introduce, I have two school committee members that are joining me here this evening, from the town of Bourne, David Sampson, and from the town of Sandwich, Michael Our budget subcommittee is made up of Michael Deegan, our treasurer from the town of Sandwich, our chairperson, Robert Fitchamire, from the town of Marion, excuse me, the town of Wareham, Dominic Camerano from the town of Wareham, and Mary Ann Smith from the town of Falmouth. Community involvement, this is just a sampling of some of the projects that we have to give back to the towns for supporting Upper Cape Tech, and how we can work together cooperatively. Here in Bourne, the auto collision shop repaired a cruiser for the police department, that's actually for Falmouth, excuse me, and in town of Bourne for the natural resources. It was a police cruiser that had been retired, it was sent in, completely taken apart and redone, repainted for natural resources. Our horticulture department, working with Sandwich Garden Club. And our veterinary science students, working for Nero's Law, over 200 EMS and firefighter personnel, were trained in all of Nero's Law training to come into play, and that's done by our students at Upper Cape Tech. Some projects that are upcoming, I'm going to stand slightly just like, projects that are upcoming, archery working, again, for the town of Falmouth with some docks, doing some reconstruction. You can see here, working down in the town at the Marine Life Center, as well as Sandwich at the Sandwich Hollow Golf Club, small print, I'm just standing here, I'm going to put my glasses on, I'm staying closer. And the environmental technology shop, working with Mass Autobahn, working with the town of Sandwich down at Sandy Neck Beach, as well as working with Mass Wildlife, we take in five red-bellied cutters each year, turtles, that we nurture them, give them back to Mass Wildlife, and they are released into the wild. And our horticulture students, working again with the town of Sandwich, constructing some volleyball courts, and with Falmouth for Arbor Day. Admissions, you can see over the last four years, our applications at Upper Cape Tech have continued to increase, and enrollment has followed as soup as well. Enrollment by town, the town of Bourne has an additional seven students this year over last year. We have a total of 64 additional students at Upper Cape. And questions as we go through, if you have them, please by all means, ask as we go. I thought this slide was important in that it's staff attainment, many of our staff are graduates of Upper Cape Tech, and as you can see here, the column on the left has their years of service to the district. Two-thirds of our staff have been there seven years or longer and have stayed. They come, they enjoy teaching at Upper Cape, and they stay for their career. Net school spending, an important slide in what's being done, this is how the towns actually support their school systems, and you can see here.
Roger, can you try to speak to that microphone, because?
You can't hear me?
It's not for here, it's actually for the people on cable or for the streaming, so we want them to be able to hear.
Is this better?
It doesn't have to be right up there, but just, just within, like, you know, if you're in front of it, I don't know how far it was, I just want people to be able to hear.
Yep, and I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Mary Jane. This is an important slide in how this town actually supports your local school systems as well as Upper Cape Tech. What you see here is your required net school spending, that is your foundation that is determined by the Commonwealth, that is the bare minimum that you can use to fund your school systems. This is FY '23, so this is the most recent information that's out here. The actual net school spending is to the column on the right, and then you can see the difference. I'm pleased to live in Bourne, as we really support our school systems as well as supporting Upper Cape Tech. Per pupil comparison, FY '22, and this is from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the operating assessment, the column on the left is the cost to Upper Cape Tech of a high school student, $17,859, and then the cost in district. Some of the drivers driving our budget this year, contractual obligations, health insurance increase, the vocational supply cost, as well as the increase in student enrollment. Our FY '25 approved budget, approved by our school committee. FY '24 to FY '25, you can see the difference in each line item as we go through. School committee has a very slight increase over last year. The superintendent's office is salaries and supply increase in my office. Business and finance are legal auditing and info tech salaries, you can see the increase Instruction, school leadership, our principal and our administration, those contractual increases as well as supplies. Curriculum and department leaders, our teacher leaders, those are contractual increases. Teaching services are our teacher salaries, our paraprofessionals, and our substitutes. This has and represents step-in-lane increases that are contractual. Professional development has a slight increase over last year. Our instructional materials, textbooks, as well as eBooks, and all of the software and licenses that go with them to support that in supplies. Our instructional technology are the Chromebooks that are provided to all of our freshmen, you see the increase because the class sizes continue to increase. Our guidance department is contractual increases to salaries as well as supplies, we have added in a halftime guidance counselor, because as we contractually get closer to the number of 900, we need to add one, so we are being proactive in doing so over a course of two years. Psychological services, the social and emotional well-being of our students, their families, and we can continue to see that, as we came out of COVID, it has not changed, that need Medical and health services are the contractual increases for our two school nurses and our doctor, physician who is on call. Athletics, you see a large increase in the athletic line item for coaches and officials, but this also includes, we were doing co-op for wrestling with the town of Sandwich, MIAA will not allow us to do that any longer, so we must have our own team, and now we need to buy the mats and all of the equipment to go along with that. That's why you see that increase in that line item. Student activities is for our advisors, and again, that is purely contractual increases. Our school security is our security officer, the supplies for our cameras, and for the detail that we have with Bourne PD at the bottom of the hill. Our operations and maintenance, our custodial services, our contractual increases along with the cost of supplies that continue to go up. Heating and utilities for the last four years have stayed the same, this year we have seen and we're predicting, as we're moving forward, the price on the natural gas that we're utilizing, and we're seeing that increase start to spike and move forward. Our maintenance on our grounds are again, contractual. Our maintenance on our grounds are again contractual increases for staff and the cost of those supplies. Maintenance of buildings, again, the contractual increases within the salaries for those staff members and the cost of the supplies. Supplies are an underlying note through here as everything continues to increase. Maintenance of materials, again, uh, as we continue to expand and grow, that line item needed to increase just for those pieces of equipment, to be fiscally responsible to maintain those and get the lifespan necessary out of those pieces of equipment. Employee benefits, I mentioned early on about health, uh, cost, the insurance. We are part of, uh, the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, I know that the town is not self-insured, but being part of Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, they predicted for us an eight percent increase in health insurance costs this year that we need to absorb, and that's difficult to do, um, when you're looking to build your budget moving forward. Our insurance program is the building and liability and student insurance, and that is the cost of doing business, that's, those costs are just transferred on. Programs with others is school choice, and Upper Cape Tech does not subscribe to school choice, um, but through the Department of Education, a student coming from, let's say, the town of Born or Sandwich, that's going to Falmouth for a Chapter 74 program or one of the other towns, that money goes through us, so it comes in and goes right back out, it's not part of the actual budget, but that is their mechanism on how they put that through. Our total foundation budget is eighteen million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Our Chapter 78 increased this year, but I'll share with you, when we do the number of students and per student, it's actually down two hundred and fifty-eight dollars per student, which translates to Upper Cape of a two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar loss from the Commonwealth that's now being put back on the towns. Our anticipated interest revenue, seventy-five thousand, our anticipated municipal Medicaid, and the E and D, last year by statute through the Department of Revenue, we're able to keep five percent of what our budget is in a, as, uh, Mary Jane has said in the past, free cash. It is an account that is there if we were to have a catastrophe at, at the school. The school only comes in front of the towns once, they come in the spring for their entire budget. The local school departments have the ability to come back in the fall if there's something that happens or money that is needed, we do not have that luxury. DOR then now allows five percent to be kept in an excess in deficiency account. Our certified budget at the end of each year, and last year was certified to be well under that, so we don't have money to put against the budget this year. Our net foundation budget is fourteen million two hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Transportation, transportation provided by the district is three hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Our contract, uh, transportation through Lucini Busing is one million one hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and our total transportation is one million five hundred twenty thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. Our anticipated transportation aid, which comes right from House One, the cherry sheet, is nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. The legislature has the transportation reimbursement at a hundred percent. This represents.
I was just gonna say, the elusive hundred percent regional transportation.
Well, and this represents, MJ, sixty-four point two-five percent of that.
Yeah.
If they were truly funding it, that one point four eight nine six two four line item would be at the bottom instead of the nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That leaves a deficit of five hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which again is put back on the towns by the Commonwealth. So you're looking at close to over eight hundred thousand dollars put back on the towns, and that's not been the case in the past, and I share that with you just because legislatively throughout each of the towns, we should be advocating to change that, not only for Upper Cape Tech, but that's, that's true for our sister school here in Born, their Chapter 70 was not the same.
It, it, it did happen in the town of Born, on the state aid for the town, we were in a deficit of over two hundred thousand dollars, and it's happening all over the, all over the state, I did write our legislators about that.
Well done. Our LP, our LPN program, the total LPN is eight hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, with an anticipated tuition of eight hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, leaves us with a net LPN of twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Our combined net transportation and LPN figure is five hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Our capital has not changed from last year, there is a zero percent increase, it is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We utilize that for all of the large equipment purchases for both the shops and the school, which acts as a municipality. The stabilization fund, as you will well remember, was the bond project of the windows, and we've continued to include that in, and that money goes into the stabilization fund for the roof. The roof at Upper Cape Tech is twenty-seven years old, it's a twenty-year roof, we continue to, to baby it and maintain it, uh, we have been, uh, as I've said the last three years, in the MSBA, um, appeal piece to see if we get into the queue, we still have not gotten in, uh, so we're waiting for that to see, uh, when that will happen. When it does, that fund will be used against that amount to again offset the cost of the towns. Total capital is three hundred and five thousand dollars. As my colleague said, uh, and Jordan, I don't know where he went, but he's gone, every good presentation has a pie chart, and we would be a mess not to include ours. Sixty-one, over six, just over sixty-one percent, or just about sixty-one percent is spent on instruction of every dollar that comes into Upper Cape Tech. A little over four percent on the health, uh, emotional and social well-being of our students. Operations is just under ten, fixed charges is over twenty percent of our overhead, and administration represents less than five percent. Our total foundation budget this year for FY25 is eighteen million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. The percentages of the operating budget, and you can see here what it is for the town of Born. The percentages for the capital is calculated differently, that's by the total enrollment within the district. And those are the district numbers, they do not include kindergarten, they are first grade through twelve. We want to thank you for your support, we appreciate it and all that you do for Upper Cape Tech. Questions?
Any questions from the board?
No, this is, again, it's difficult to provide the best with a finite amount of money, but, you know, we appreciate you, you know, being creative and, and working through some, you know, difficult, um, programming to, to offer the best for your students, so good things are happening up there and.
They truly are, and I would, I invite you to come up to visit, come up for lunch, MJ is smiling as she has been there for lunch, uh, but please come, uh, see, Upper Cape Tech is your school system, come and see your school, see what your students are doing, and let us know how we can help. Kudos to the town administrator and to, uh, the finance director, to Erica, uh, they budgeted this year, they were over what our assessment is, so, um, kudos to them, because this was a tough year to actually do that in light of what the Commonwealth did with Chapter 70 and with regional transportation.
Well, there's always a struggle with the funding formula, it's never the same, right?
It's never, it's never.
It's never accurate.
No, no, it's not.
I know the Mass Association's crew committee has, has long tried to, to battle that, that fight for.
Kuchar's been.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. What was the old percent change though, from last year to this year?
Actually, five point six seven percent is the overall change in the total budget, but again, that's not operating, this is the entire budget, which is everything, that's all of your overhead, your health, uh, costs, um, your snow removal, your, uh, maintenance on all of your buildings, on all of it, so it's not just an operating increase, it is the entire budget.
But I think, I mean, I, I really, and I think the town really appreciates that, we had our meeting in November, we talked about how tight the budget was, you guys do as you always do, and, um, took that into consideration, and we made the numbers work, and we really appreciate it, I mean, even with the increased students.
Sorry, MJ, I was not speaking to it again.
Even with the increase in students, we came up with a manageable number that makes, that we can actually do, so we appreciate that communication, we appreciate working with Upper Cape, um, through everything, and, um, interested in the docs project, because there may have some doc things that we could talk to you about, so.
Absolute. Give us a call.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, no, just, bravo, I love it, I think you, amazing work, um, I haven't had the opportunity to come for lunch yet, but I have been bragging about it at the Otis, at the J- Joint Base Cape Cod meetings, and enticing people to come and enjoy your food, so I will get up there.
Excellent, excellent, we look forward to that.
Maybe we'll make a lunch date or something.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
As long as we don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you so, so much, I appreciate it.
And thank you for, call committee members for coming and supporting him.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. SciTech Review Draft Comment Letter Regarding Digital Equity Plan.
Good evening, once again, just as a little background here, uh, the, sure, the Cape Cod Commission, uh, delivered their draft digital equity plan, uh, on March fifth, something like that, and, uh, our committee, uh, we saw it towards the, uh, the end of the week, and I quickly called a meeting on March fourteenth to prepare comments letter, this comments letter for you to, uh, to review, um, we, uh, we had a quorum there, um, I want to thank, uh, Anne Marie especially for helping herd the cats in terms of, uh, on the fly, we wrote this non masterpiece, um, set of comments, uh, to the Cape Cod Commission. The big part of this, uh, the whole report is that the, uh, they identified a number of needs, and they identified a number of very general, uh, implementation, call them priorities, uh, that they think should go forward, and they gave absolutely no detailed, uh, plans or instruction for us or guidance on, um, on how to do that, so we just, uh, the letter basically asked for more detail. Uh, they also talk about, uh, uh, implementation plans that are done by town and also done regionally. What is a regional implementation plan, is that something the commission itself is going to put forward, we want more details on that. So that's the substance of the letter, uh, again, it's not a masterpiece, um, you can tell it's written by a committee, and apologies for that, but we did the best we could to get it into the docket.
Um, any comments or questions from the board members? I think it's great work.
Do we know what the next steps are?
Well, they, um, the report says that, uh, MBI, the Mass Broadband Institute, is going to come out with one hundred thousand dollar implementation grants, um, and, uh, that money will be available.
Yeah.
MBI right now, uh, is way behind on a number of the grants, releasing, uh, winners on a number of the grants they have out, they've been pushing back deadlines because I think they're just overwhelmed, they've got five technical people trying to do this and review applications for who knows how many towns and other entities that are coming in. But, uh, this report, identification of the needs is the, uh, uh, the first step, it's the gatekeeper that allows access to money for that, it's going to allow access to, uh, potential application for the second round of these gap network grants, uh, to, to remedy some of the digital equities, both in terms of, uh, connectivity technology, uh, as well as digital learning. I will say that the, uh, member, the trustees of the library, uh, contacted me when she saw the, uh, that there, this grant was coming up and that they had identified bad Wi-Fi at the library, uh, lack of loner Chromebooks, which many other libraries give out, which our, the Jonathan Born Library does not, and they said, uh, gee, uh, help us to try to write this grant proposal, let us know what the, uh, what the specifications for the grant are. Uh, we in fact asked MBI, and they said, stay tuned, which is their standard answer for any question we ask them. So, we're trying to stay on top of it, but, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll get some more information, there's an upcoming meeting with MBI tomorrow, okay, uh, one or two of us will be listening in on that call, hopefully we get, uh, some more enlightenment on, on, uh, what they expect and what their schedule is.
Is there an expectation with respects from the town perspective on what, um, because the town contracted the commission from the digital equity, you know, grant, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So is, it, has, is there a next step with respects to implementation or any further, you know, guidance on implementation or what, where we should go from here?
So the commission will compile any and all comments that they receive, they'll provide the select, they'll come and meet with the select board, um, give you all of the comments, give you their plan, and then you as the select board will need to set the direction on the priorities.
Okay.
So we should plan on a meet, sometime in the future, there'll be a result, a sort of a wrap-up of this, 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 um, Cape Cod Commission, um, comment. Thank you for the comments, um, I think, um, I think the comment about saying that a lot of the town is underserved is a really important comment, and I have noticed, um, just on Facebook, that there are some people who are starting to say, oh, Comcast said I didn't have that correct, I wasn't meeting that minimum service requirement of twenty-one hundred, and so, you know, they, they, they made that happen, I recently had Comcast tell me that I had to replace my modem because it wasn't giving me the adequate, now, I will say that my speed tests are coming exactly at like twenty-one and eighty, you know, a hundred and two, I mean, but it's meeting that minimum not to be underserved, so.
Once again, just.
It's pressure, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
One reminder is that, uh, again, the, uh, comments about being underserved are based on rather old speed testing, uh, the new segment of speed testing that MBI is going to require is going to be, uh, I think they specified June fifteenth to July fifteenth, and I'm sure it's just a coincidence that Comcast noticed that they weren't meeting that just before the speed testing is to be done, you know, absolutely a coincidence, so, anyway.
Whatever it takes, I mean, I think, I think there's been a lot of progress, and so I, I think that the committee has been worthwhile for bringing it, for saying it's an important issue, we need, we need internet, we need to be able to function, um, uh, and this only has to do, this digital equity plan, does it only have to do with internet access, really? Broadband, it's just related to broadband.
Well, it's, it's the connectivity, which is the fiber or the, whatever, it's the education of the, uh, the users, uh, and it's the hardware that they have at home.
Right, it encompasses all of digital equity through being able to use the equipment, you have, being able to have the equipment, being able to have access to the equipment, being, right, so it's not just about fast Wi-Fi.
But it, it's really about the internet portion of it, it's just like, when we had the cable contract discussion, it was only about the cable, it wasn't about anything else, and it doesn't have to do with your cellular signal, which is a whole nother digital equity signal.
Well, they, one part of it where they overlap is there's a system called fixed Wi-Fi access, which is basically going through the cell phone towers, or in some cases 5G antennas that they put up on telephone poles, uh, that allow both cell connectivity, uh, as well as, as Wi-Fi, and T-Mobile offers that, um, so, uh, if you're close enough to a, a cell tower, you can, you can get internet access, um, through, uh, over the air, um, and, but you've got to be very close and be able to see it line of sight, otherwise every leaf that blows in front of it degrades your service.
But digital equity does include, um, being able to use all devices that can access it, so that would include cell.
So, yes, I mean, that's kind of, there is no signal where I live, so, I'm on wireless, yeah. All right, um, so, uh, do we need a motion to authorize a select board chair to sign this letter, uh, of comment? From half of the board?
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous.
Okay.
And when does this need to be, is there instructions for emailing this?
Uh, yes.
I can take care of.
Okay, that's all set.
Yeah, it can go a number of different ways, and the deadline. And the deadline is next Monday. So, that's why it had to be at this meeting. And thank you for putting it on the agenda.
You are welcome. Thank you for writing the letter. Okay. Next item, discussion of possible vote for rest, request to hold a wedding at Barlow's Landing for over 20 people on April 5th, 2024 and parking waiver. Is there anyone here for that?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
This is Krista Lansman.
Hi.
Coming on soon.
Hi, Krista, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you having me. So.
Do you want to just describe a little what you're asking for? And I think it's a Friday, right?
Yes, it is. I apologize. My kids just walked in the door from gymnastics and don't know when this call, so they might come in.
Yeah, that's okay.
Horrible timing. Girls, give me one second, I'll be right back. I apologize. Literally as soon as you, you welcome to me, they, they walked in the door. So, I am the owner of 415 Barlow Landing Road. And my fiancee and I are getting married on April 5th and would like to use the Barlow Landing beach for a short 10-minute ceremony. We requested permission due to the fact that we're, even though we're trying to have 10 or 15 people, we just want to be on the safe side in case we hit 20 or 21. It will be a short ceremony, no decorations, no frills, just family and some bobs.
Sounds wonderful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So, this is, just so, just so you know, it's open, you know, it's a public access beach. So, we can't tonight, you know, we can't, so you're going to have a private ceremony. You could have more than 20 people, people that wanted to share in your joy. But you're welcome to use the beach. And you, you may need some parking at Barlow's Landing. So, in order to facilitate that, we can, up to the board. But it's a Friday evening in April, so I think we can waive the parking sticker enforcement for that Friday evening. Do we need to specify the hours or?
It's in the, it's all in the application. So, if you approve it, we'll let the police department know.
Okay, for during that point, time period. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No.
Okay, I will enter.
Bob.
Bob?
Hello, Krista. This is Bob Dwyer. I'm putting my hat on as the president of the Pecasset Village Association. Welcome to Pecasset. And I'd just like to ask if Marlene can get Matt to possibly get a raking done on that beach beforehand. It's still covered with all kinds of.
No.
It's covered with all kinds of debris from these storms. And it's in, it's in a pretty messy state, but.
Well, if it's seaweed, that's good for the beach. It is, the seaweed on the beach is good for maintaining the sand and it's the winter beach and.
Okay, just a point, just an observation.
That's okay.
We have the Conservation Commission agent on the call, so I am not doing that.
I mean, I, I think they do rake the beach in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before the.
Just before Memorial Day.
So, it's a, oh, not, it's a beach as it is.
I make a motion to, to approve the request to hold a wedding at Barlow's Landing for over 20 people on April 5th, 2024 and parking waiver. As presented.
Motion by Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Session by Anne Marie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We already did the consent agenda.
We did that already.
Yep. Review of term meeting articles.
Thank you. So, Article 1 is the standard authorizations and appropriations that are, that have to be reauthorized every year. Nothing new or, or different. The only change is the COLA applied to the town clerk salary. Nothing else has changed, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about regular authorizations?
No.
Okay.
Article 2 is the general operating budget. And in your packet, there's a, sorry, let me.
Are we going by the packet or are we going by the standing draft warrant with motions?
Well, we can go by the draft motions. The operating budget, there's a set of, a summary sheet of the changes that I'd like to run through. And I just want to give you that page number.
Is that in the packet?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So, if, in your packet, it's on page 58. So, as, as we've all talked about a number of times today, this has been a challenging budget year. And we had to rebalance a number of times. So, we are balanced. And I'd like to kind of take you through the steps of how we got there for the operating budget. So, on page 58, we, at the end of the day, we were able to restore the $10,000 that I had cut from the recording secretary wages out of the TA office budget. We've also been able to restore the $10,000 that I cut for professional development out of the HR budget. We have reset the wages for the facilities manager after that vacancy. We are anticipating a retirement this, this fiscal year, FY '24, in the building department. So, for FY '25, those wages have been reset. We've talked about both the Bourne Public Schools and Upper Cape Tech already tonight. And these amounts shown here are how they further reduced their budget to help us. We were able to restore the $7,500 for contracted services in DPW that was cut out of the original proposed budget. We have reset the wages for staff turnover in the health department. So, those new, those savings from those staff turnovers are captured here. We have received the final assessment from the veteran services off, for the veteran services officer. Modest increase of just over $4,000. So, that has been absorbed in the budget. Both positions in recreation are now filled and we have actual numbers. So, the FY '25 budget reflects the real cost. And those adjustments have been made in the latest version. We are anticipating.
I just asked, do we know when the new assistant director will be?
After Katie returns from vacation, so.
That makes sense.
Yes. We are budgeting for a slight reduction in natural gas costs. We're watching, we're watching our historical usage there. And we are anticipating some savings from the ESCO upgrades that we've done. So, that's promising. We have been able to add even, we're proposing to add even more to the OPEB liability per the financial policy. So, that's a, that's a final number. And an additional, an additional $25,645 will be added to that liability. So, the next line, the group insurance is interesting. This is the health insurance. And as Superintendent Forgé referenced, the town is self-insured. And I had proposed in the January budget, a 2% increase for health insurance premiums. He mentioned that the Cape Cod group is looking at an 8% for FY '25. Since the January budget, the finance director, the HR director and I have had a chance to sit down and talk in detail with the town's health insurance consultant. So, we retained cooking company to advise us on setting our, our rates. And they took a close look at our claims history and, and the health of the trust fund balance. And with taking into account the very good history on claims and the very healthy balance, our consultants have recommended that we do not, that we funded at 0%. So, we're actually not anticipating an increase to health insurance premiums for FY '25.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
So, not exactly sure how Bourne does that, but I'm glad that we do. So, that's actually very good news. And it's, we're realizing just over $133,000 in savings because of that. The next line is a correction, is, is to account for a correction that we, that we received from the Barnstable County Retirement Board. Our initial assessment that we received back in December was too low. So, we've had to increase our payment to the retirement board by just over $118,000. So, that was another gap in the budget that we had to, you know, work to fill. That was unanticipated.
Do you know if the, that's been corrected on that, on their website?
I don't know.
If, if you, you don't know if we can go and look and see like how it's affected everyone? And this includes the early pay discount.
Yes, it does.
And, and the COLA adjustment that was voted last year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It does. And we have been able to restore an addition, we've been, we have, I haven't been able to restore the full $100,000 that I cut out of the reserve fund. But I, but we are able to restore 22,500. So, we put some additional money back into the reserve fund. And then we've talked, we've talked about the position we've been facing with the cherry sheets and net state aid. So, those changes are also reflected. But at the end of the day, thanks to everyone's kind of cooperation and, you know, creativity, we have been able to close, we've been able to close multiple gaps that opened up over the course of this budget.
Thank you.
Looks good.
It was a tough job, but I think it's worked out well. And I think getting a handle on it early in November and talking to about the issue like helped us be able to work through it cooperatively. And we appreciate your work and the work of the finance team to bring it to closure.
Thank you.
The balanced budget.
So, then that's Article 2. Article 3 is the sewer budget. And right now.
Do you want us to call the joint meeting with the sewer commissioners to order for this? I mean, are you going to ask us for something?
No.
Okay.
No. I'm not asking for anything. So.
Well, when are we going to have an opportunity to talk about retained earnings in the budget?
So, the sewer commissioners are meeting.
On Tuesday?
On Tuesday next week. So, if you want to give Jared a call and ask him to put it on, and because we still have plenty of time to change the motion if you so, if you want to, if the sewer commissioners want to. But right now, nothing has changed, there are no adjustments since the sewer commissioners have last voted.
Perfect. I mean, I'll. Can we call the joint meeting to order for this, just for the person? I have a comment I'd like to make and since it was part of this, put in the.
Okay.
Want to call it to order?
So, calling the meeting of the Bourne Sewer Commissioners to order at 8:35 PM.
Okay. So, when we look at the motions later and in the handbook, I mean, it's using zero retained earnings towards the budget. And I, I would like to have a discussion about increasing, about keeping the retained earnings for that budget level at $150,000. And I, I, I think it's important because there's been, the users who've been on the system for a long time experienced rather dramatic increase in rates when the wastewater treatment plant came on. And even though we're, we've been holding rates level since then, I think the benchmark that we should be using is the rates in the year prior. And the rate in the year prior, without the excess retained earnings that were voted, was 1,051 per user. And I think that that's a benchmark that I'd like to work towards. Because we really told the users that they, we wouldn't be asking them to pay for the wastewater treatment plant if they were existing user. And we've been gathering a lot of extra fees in the terms of allocation fees and sewer development fees that were, we talked about using those to offset the rates. And so, we got the number more users into the plant. And so, I think it's really important for us to talk about that and consider it. Because I think in these ages that we have increased our retained earnings, which fiscal year '18 were 466,000. Then it went up to 626,000. Then I went to 803, 803,000. And this year, it certified at a million 10,000. And so, we've been collecting fees and increasing rates. And I think we need to sincerely think about keeping the retained earnings at 150,000 if there's allocation fees and sewer development fees to sustain that and till we can get more users in the system. So, if you want to wait till next Tuesday to vote that, I would request that that be on the agenda.
You, so it is highlighted for a reason in, in the draft motions. If you want to make that, if you want to make that decision tonight, you certainly can.
I think, yeah. I, I think as I gain more knowledge of the sewer system and how that's allocated, I think a, an important piece of this is equity, right? Equity for the payers who've been paying for a long, long time. And that, you know, when this new system came on board and while we have to get more users on it, they've carried the burden of the operations of that plant, right?
For a couple of years now.
For a couple of years now. So, what are we saving the retained earnings for? And if we have, if we can, if we can sustain without having those fluctuations in rates and, and building that equity piece over some time, I think the 150 is well spent. You know, for, for the users. Because if you look at the allocation sheets and what's come, and what's coming on, right? If, if over the next maybe three years, we might be getting a chunk of allocation fees coming in from some large projects that are, who knows, right? But, but I don't think, I, I think that, I think we can sustain the 150 without jeopardizing any financial.
And, and I think it's something we have to monitor. I mean, if we start getting retained earnings then below 800,000, and we haven't set our benchmark for what that should be.
Right.
You know, we might want to look back at it if we're not getting the fees. But we're not cutting any fees. But we're not cutting any fees. We're cutting thirty-five thousand of miscellaneous fees towards, towards the budget. And we've been getting two hundred and fifty-four thousand last year. This year we have a hundred and thirteen thousand already. And I think we need to take that into our calculation.
Yeah.
So um, uh, do you wanna do it, it, right now or, and, I mean, the motions is kind of a separate thing?
I would do it now because you've got the, I, I would do it now just because you have the sewer commissioners meeting open.
Yep.
And then if you do it now, you can close that meeting and we'll adj- we'll make the adjustments.
Okay. So I make a motion that we um, apply a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of retained earnings to the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Hold a second.
Second.
All right, so MJ made the motion and we second. Any further discussion? Anyone pose, abstain? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. So uh, do we have a motion to close the session?
Yeah. So did you, was that like three, was it unanimous or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you. Uh, a motion to um,
Adjourn.
adjourn the joint ma- meeting with the BORN sewer commissioners.
And we moved, second.
Take it.
Second from MJ. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Okay.
So Article Four is the ISWAM operating budget. And we don't have any adjustments for this budget. Um, we're just moving things forward as they were originally proposed.
Uh, could we have some discussion in the future about possibly increasing the budget line item for host community expenses on the ISWAM budget? Now, I'm talking about the revenue side of the general fund. I'm talking about the expenses side um, for the host community fee for ISWAM to reflect the increase in rates. Cause I'm, I'm, if we were at nine hundred and eighty-six thousand last year and budgeted at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand this year and the, there's a increase from four dollars and, so last year, last year for ISWAM, the first quarter rates were like three dollars and ninety-three cents. And the second quarter rate, the second half of the year were four twenty-five. This year it's gonna be four dollars and twenty-five cents in four dollars and thirty-six cents. So unless we have quite a reduction in the tonnage below two hundred and forty thousand, then we're gonna have more than nine hundred and eighty-six thousand. And we should be budgeting that number according to what we might be receiving so that we're not looking for that to be funded from another line item.
I, I understand.
Yep.
Um, is that something that you would be comfortable waiting to do an adjustment in the fall? Or do you wanna, do you wanna do it for the annual?
I'm okay with doing the adjustment in the fall for FY twenty-five.
Yes.
But for FY twenty-four, we should seriously be considering, looking at that. I mean, we could depend on reserve fund transfer to do it. But not too many years ago, we had to shut down C and D and have a special meeting in June because they didn't have enough money in the budget to pay the, they didn't have enough money in the budget to cover that expense. So it's one of the reasons that the ISWAM uh, financial policy is written that way. And I'd like to know um, before the special, we, we don't, we don't have another meeting before the special closes, right?
Mm-mm.
Um.
Dan, do you have any? Do you have any comment for FY twenty-four?
We, we had a, I, I was just looking at that.
You'll have to go to the podium.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That could make me walk.
I know.
We could bring a microphone over to you.
No, I mean, we're, we're, we're not, we're not doing too bad.
Dan.
Uh, second quarter.
Dan, I'm sorry, they have to hear you at home.
That's okay, I can.
I'm sorry. You can come to the table if you want.
Sit in a comfy chair.
Hey, I'll, I'll go to sleep.
Hear that?
Most of you know I'm Dan Barrett, the general manager of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Department. Um, yeah, we, we, we've been looking at that. I mean, I, I kind of agree um, with you. There's a whole lot of layers to discuss with the host fee, but certainly raising the budget helps us uh, on our side. And, you know, we don't end up having to take money out of, of other parts of our budget at the end of the year. Because when we do have a good year. I mean, if you, if you just look at our budgeted or our contractual um, tonnages, you're looking at like eight hundred and sixty thousand right there. You got another twenty thousand dollars uh, coming, or another twenty thousand tons coming in on C and D that's not included in that number.
Yeah.
So it, it can get up there. I know it's a bit of a bone of contention um, from time to time when we raise it. But, you know, if you, we're making money while we're doing it, it's not like we're losing money, so um, not a bad thing.
So does that, if you were to raise that, do you raise your revenue projection as well as your revenue projection stay the same?
My revenue projection will stay the same. I, I looked at that today too, again revisited that. Um, it will stay the same. We're worried about my revenue projection. As you know, I do things a little differently, but we're looking at about fifteen point eight million, I project. And that's mostly off of fixed contractual um, numbers coming in and historical data from C and D and soils and things. We are gonna have a tough year with soils. We're in the phase nine vertical expansion, so we're scraping off all that cover to get to the waste and put waste on top of it again. So we don't need as much cover. Um, we were up to four to five hundred thousand dollars a year the last three to five years because of the way we, we had to run uh, the top of the landfill. Now we're scraping it off, so.
So I, this is, this is, I, I think that this, in our ISWAM financial policy, we say by this point in time of year that the ISWAM needs to talk to the finance director about whether all these numbers are gonna work out for this fiscal year. And we were in a different situation when it happened before, when we ran into this situation in that we didn't have reserve funds. We, I mean, literally there were, that we didn't have six hundred thousand set aside in reserve funds. And that's one of the reasons that we did it.
Yep.
So if this could be considered an unanticipated expense that to be paid for as reserve fund if it happens. I mean, last year, there was, last year, it was nine hundred and eighty-six thousand and it was budgeted at, I think, nine hundred.
Yep.
And they were able to find the eighty-six thousand in other line items. I just think as the host community fee goes, is continually going up, that budgeted number needs to, we need to think, we need to think about what, what's the effect of that. And conversely, I've also said that I wanna start looking at whether we should be doing more on the revenue side for the general fund from the host community fee. Cause as you start building that, that, this, this gap is getting bigger and bigger. And that, that's a whole nother discussion for another day. And I'm not gonna try to have that in this budget, you know, for this. And I'm comfortable with waiting for the fall, but I did wanna bring it to the attention because if it's, is something that should be addressed in the special, then I expect that you'll put it in the special as a Warren under call. And I just wanna make sure that the cu- conversation had, cause I started looking at it today and I said, whoa. So that's it. So it's up to you. We're not gonna do it tonight, cause you're not prepared to. And if you can, and it's really the fi- fiscal twenty-four is the one I'm a little bit worried about now, cause there's always time for twenty-five.
So we'll sit down with Erica and Michael and we'll see if, if we're comfortable or if we think we need to make an adjustment on the special.
Yeah, that sounds good. And, and I'm, I'm not as concerned because we do have reserve fund to make that transfer for. I just don't wanna be setting down C and D at the beginning of June like we had to do.
No, and I think the other thing to te- to keep in mind here is we were having an average year. We were probably a little bit, we were a little bit behind um, the budget line. We're still doing well financially, but we were a little bit behind that particular budget line. Uh, we came back hard um, in February of all months um, with uh, we were in excess actually uh, ninety, we were about fifteen thousand dollars in excess in that month, which brought us back up a little closer even to where we need to be for that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget. Um, but like I said, Covanta's gonna be going into an outage um, in April, major outage, which always impacts us. But they like to make it up on um, bringing us MSW, which, you know, that's always a, a discussion we'll be having next week. Um, not a bad thing, but certainly it, it will cause some adjustment in our operations, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Shouldn't impact revenue too much.
All right, thank you. Actually, the next ar- article is Dan as well.
Okay.
So the capital, the capital plan um, has, we're, we haven't made any changes since you've last discussed it, but ISWAM needs to come back and fill in out the blank for a to-be-determined for their office and, and garage building project. And that is something that we are going to move to the special. So um, because they are under a tight timeframe in order to start, you know, the next cell's construction and they need to get out of the way. So we wanna put them on the special for this project that he's gonna describe so they can start spending right away.
Good.
Um, as you know, I don't know if you guys have seen the early renditions of what we're proposing, the buildings and stuff. Um, and we're ready to move forward with that. Um, what we'd like to do is, with everyone's help, um, is get it to construction bid stages um, by the fall town meeting and go out to bid. To, in order to do that, um, we're looking at getting the uh, schematic designs twenty-five percent, up to a twenty-five percent design level, design development up to sixty percent. And the final um, one hundred percent level will be achieved by the time we get to uh, the fall with approval of this article. What we're talking here is about one point nine million, one million nine hundred and seven, seventeen thousand dollars altogether. After that, there's an additional one point one four million left in that uh, proposal for construction administration. In other words, when they start building oversight, C Q and A, Q, Q A, Q C. Those numbers also include um, the O P M. We'd like to bring obviously an O P M on the job. Move that forward.
So, do we have anything in writing on this or is it gonna?
I'm sorry, what, I'm sorry.
Is there anything in writing for this?
Yes, this was a separate email that I sent because the file was so large. Um, so it was, it was a Weston Sampson feasibility study that came as a separate attachment.
I have it open.
What, what's the date of the email?
It's also included online in the packet.
It was Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Was it in the packet?
No, it had to go separate, cause it was too large.
But it's a separate link online.
It was Ison capital update, right?
Yep.
I'm sorry?
It was the ISWAM capital update.
Yes.
It was in.
May nineteen.
Is it under the calendar?
Three nineteen is today.
So I don't usually look at the calendar for those things, so.
Right?
Okay. So we got an email for, from it, for it, and there's.
We got it on Friday.
Yep. It's awful large, you wouldn't be able to read through it now.
It's Weston Sampson.
Okay. Friday was my down day for being like really sick.
While you're looking at it, I mean, the facility be- will be located in the very far southwest corner of the facility. Um, now that we know what our footprint, final footprint's gonna look like, we know where we can put a permanent structure.
Oh, good.
So yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be an upgrade. The mechanics are working in a really old dark garage, very small, uh, no insulation, the roof's leaking and time to get those fellows out into uh, some better places.
Okay, any questions from the board?
So can you explain the breakout again? So the um, total project, the total fees is three million fifty-nine thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
One point nine one seven.
One point nine, you said, okay.
Will get us to final design.
And then construction administration is the big remainder.
Exactly.
And the O P M's included in the one point nine?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Oh, O P M, yeah, okay.
And you're gonna do this as a separate article in the special, you think, yep?
Yes.
Um, are, is there gonna be a building committee for this or are you gonna just do it with ISWAM?
So it is subject to the designer selection law, so a building committee is required by law.
Okay. We can have a separate agenda item for that. I'm inclined to make it a town administrator-appointed building committee. But we'll talk about that. Who should be on it and what kind of, what expertise should be on it? I wanna make sure that we get the right mix of people on that building committee. Okay. All right, looks good, Dan, making progress.
Didn't have to say much, so it must be okay. Now, I felt bad coming in without anything um, earlier in the capital project uh, process, but um, we were able to put it together pretty quickly. Weston Sampson were very helpful to us and Marlene has been very helpful with her background. So this is new, new water for us. We never built anything this big, so living out of trailers is.
You've been in trailers forever.
Always worked. Forty years I've been in a trailer, so what to do? All right, thank you, you all done with me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, have a good night, guys.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Dan.
All right, next is uh, stabilization fund.
Stabilization fund is the next article and I, I apologize, I had to move some numbers around. Um, um, stabilization fund is thirteen on, on the warrant now. And um, this is your general rainy day stabilization fund. And we're um, gonna recommend funding that at two hundred thousand dollars.
Do we know what percentage that would give us then? Is this moving towards a new financial policy or?
I'm gonna let Erica um, to join, join the discussion about that because there is still some time for the investments to move around a bit.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. So the fair market value as of February twenty-nine is above the current financial policy of six percent. If we were to add this today, we'd be at six point six percent, I'm sorry, six point zero six percent of the fiscal twenty-five general fund operating budget. Um, so we're just gonna monitor this as we go. I think the two hundred thousand dollars is conservative and will keep it at a minimum of six percent.
Okay. Do we have anything anywhere that tells us like what it currently is, what this two hundred thousand is gonna do and what it's gonna be? Do we have anything in writing for that?
The current balance in the stabilization fund is four million seven hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Again, that's fair market value at February twenty-nine. Um, so adding this would be a little bit over the six percent. I'll flush out the numbers for you.
Yeah.
Do an exact number.
Okay.
Later.
Yeah, that's fine, I'd just like to have it in sometime in writing, sometime before town meeting in writing so that we can accurately explain what it is.
When we're, um, when we get closer to voting the handbook, we'll be able to
Okay.
put it in the explanation in the handbook, the current balance.
Okay, sounds good.
And then the next article is Article fourteen, which is the ca- capital stabilization fund. And we're recommending that this be funded at an additional two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
These are from, this is from Free Cash?
This is from Free Cash, yes.
And, and. And, and how does, why are we recommending that amount?
Erica, I'll let you jump in.
So, as you know, we have been utilizing the capital utilization to fund and pay down some short-term notes for some capital items that we decided not to long-term borrow. So, we have a schedule that shows the amortization of these notes. So, $296,000 would be the, adding the fifth year payment. So, we're paying down $593,000 and then we're going to adjust for the, for the payment of 296 in the fifth year. So, we're keeping a minimum of five years in that fund without touching the balance that we had in there. So, again, fair market value at February 29th is approximately 3.44 million. Five years debt is just under 1.6 million for the items that we're carrying here. So, we do have a little bit of an excess. We're almost double. We have 1.58 over that, you know, practice, not really policy, but our practice.
Okay.
And then the next article is Article 19, which is amending the wetland, the Conservation Commission's consultant fees section of the Wetlands Bylaw. And Stevie Fitch is here tonight.
Hi, Stevie.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Great. So, do you want me to just give a short presentation with some background?
Yes, what are you doing?
Okay, so, for the record, I'm Stephanie Fitch, the town conservation agent. I'm here tonight to represent the Conservation Commission in their request to amend Section 9 of the Born Wetland Protection Bylaw, which is Article 3.7. Section 9 gives the commission the right to impose reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants. So, the, the request tonight is actually twofold. First, the commission would like to remove the $2,500 maximum and replace it with the word reasonable. The $2,500 cap was passed at the annual town meeting in 1989. And as I'm sure you all know, the cost of a review has gone up significantly in the last 35 years. So, it's nearly impossible at this point to find a firm, an engineering firm, or whatever professional we need to review a project and present for $2,500. So, any questions on that one before I go to the second part?
When, when did you say that that $2,500 was put in?
In 1989.
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't write it down right when you wrote it, so I didn't trust my remember, my short-term memory. Okay.
No problem. I had to do some research, so I'm happy to have that date, actually. So, then the second request is to remove the entire third paragraph that defines what type of application can be reviewed. The intent of the bylaw is to allow the commission the option to hire an expert to review either a notice of intent or a request for determination of applicability. And, you know, the commission had a discussion the other night and they decided that the type or size of the alteration really shouldn't have to be considered in, in the request for a consultant. That should be up to the commission. Because really, the use of outside consultants occurs very rarely, but when it is required, the commission wants to be able to hire the right person for the review. So, the commission believes that these amendments will provide them really with the flexibility to find an expert in the field and receive the quality reviews that would enable them to administer the Wetlands Protection Act appropriately. Any other questions?
Uh, no. And the applicant has the right to appeal the selection of the outside consultant pursuant to MGL 44. So, is that the, having a consultant at all or the consultant that the, that the Conservation Commission chose?
It's the consultant that the, the commission chooses. They can't appeal the cost. They can just appeal the, the grounds for such an appeal is limited to the claims that the consultant selected has a conflict of interest or does not possess the minimum required qualifications.
Okay. And who sets what, who sets what the minimum required qualifications are?
Um, oh, here it is. Minimum qualification shows consist either of an educational degree in or a, or related to the field at issue or three or more years of practice in the field at issue or a related field.
Isn't it, is that in the Chapter 44, Sec, Section 53G?
Yes, exactly.
That says, it says exactly the grounds for appeal?
Yes.
And where do they appeal it to?
I believe it's the select board.
Well, I think we should know that.
Let's see, the request, yeah, I'd have to read through it more, but yeah, the fact about the decision is made by city council or, or the town board of select. Yep.
So.
Select board.
Yeah, so I, these are the questions that come up at town meetings. Like what, on what grounds, like who are they appealing it to? So, now we know that we're changing, we're getting rid of the 2,500 because it's like 1989. We're, we're letting the, the commission decide when they need a consultant rather than having some measurement thing. And then if the applicant wants to appeal, it can only appeal who was selected, right? And under certain terms that are set up in the law and they appeal it to the select board.
Perfect, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Excellent explanation. All right, does anybody, anyone have any questions on this? Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bearing with us for our long meeting this evening.
Absolutely, and Marlene, good catch on the beach raking and you too, MJ, I was listening, so thank you.
Well, I will say, we have, we do have beach raking on our main, our, our Seal Lake Beach where I live. And we used to rake every day and we don't anymore in the summer. We have, we have, because it, the, the seaweed protects the, the beach, I mean, so.
Yeah, you gotta find that good, that, that right balance.
Right, and we don't do, we don't rake at all off-season.
Yeah.
That's good, okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay. Is that it for, um, review of the warrant? Okay.
Yes.
Review draft motions, I don't think we're going to do that tonight.
That's okay.
And we're not going to sign articles to the select board because we only have three members here, so it wouldn't make sense.
We'll bring that back on the.
Yeah, so we'll do that, um, whatever our next meeting is.
On the second?
Yeah, is April 2nd. And, um, one of the things that I do want select board members to think about when we're looking at the articles, I'll make up some sort of tracker once we get the warrant finalized. I want people to think about which articles don't really need more explanation and which articles do need more explanation and how much we need to be prepared. So, if you're, if, when you're thinking about what articles you might want to do, if there's going to be an explanation required, it's really going to fall to the select board member making the article to do the research and be prepared unless it's going to be answered by a staff, so. But to make a presentation, if one should be made, that avoids questions from the audience and just allows us to give the info upfront. All right then, town administrator's report.
Thank you. The town has received a 2024 cybersecurity awareness training grant and all town staff will be invited and encouraged to go through this training. Barnstable County IT did all the legwork to obtain the grant and is supporting this important training effort. We are talking regularly about how we can change our behavior as employees to reduce risks of attack to the town's network. The Massachusetts Broadband Institute has contacted me to enter into a reservation of funds agreement to earmark funding under the Municipal Digital Equity Implementation Program. I have initiated the process to reserve $70,000 at this time, which is the maximum allowed and which may be subject to increase to $100,000 depending on the final proposal to be developed after the digital equity plan is approved and adopted. The police department will be rolling out the body worn and vehicle camera program for testing soon. If the testing phases go well, full deployment is expected later this spring. The police chief and command staff will be communicating the details to other town employees and the public so people are aware that the equipment will be in use. If the select board would like a presentation about the capabilities of the system and how it's being deployed, the police chief is happy to attend a future meeting. Just please let me know if you would like a presentation.
Okay.
A very short window of time has opened up for the town to apply for a federal SAFER grant to increase staffing at the fire department. Because the deadline is very short, the chief and assistant chief have already begun, begun preparing the submission. However, the fire department is happy to schedule a presentation and discussion about this program with the select board before any decide, final decisions are made to accept any potential award. The fire department has been fully staffed for more than a year now with 40 operational positions, which equals four shifts of 10 people. Even at full staffing, we regularly backfill shifts to cover vacation, injury, and sick time, which often results in less than 10 people on shift at any given time. The SAFER program would allow the town to hire four additional firefighters at zero costs, zero cost for three years. There is no match required for those three years this round. But afterwards, the operating budget would need to absorb the personnel costs. The largest benefit to participating in the SAFER program would be to ensure that the town could always respond with a two-person ALS engine even when the ambulances are deployed on other calls. This would eliminate the risk of having a single person respond to a call for help, which is not ideal for many reasons. Bourne has participated in the SAFER program in the past and was awarded grants in 2013 and 2015. For comparison's sake, the number of calls for service in 2013 was 4,378. In 215, there were 4,931 calls. And in 2023, the department received 5,127 calls for service. And my last item is, I would like to remind everyone that if they have not already renewed their dog license, they really are running out of town.
I have just two things to say. One, on the cybersecurity, I think that's really great. I mean, I work for a major insurance company and they require as part of our compliance training every year that we do that kind of training. And second, on the SAFER grant, I'm interested, we, we had a SAFER grant before and it had the same where they funded for a certain number of time and then it didn't fund at all. And we were only able to keep, I think, half of the firefighters from the SAFER grant. The rest, we, we couldn't fund them in the budget. Then I thought they changed the program so that the funding was sort of, you started with full funding and then it went down each year and so.
It depends on the round. So, there were, there were years where it steps down. This year, there is no match at all.
For the, for three years.
There is no match at all for the three years. But the fire chief will, will definitely come and talk to you.
Yeah, and, and I, I think it was worthwhile when we have it. It does, it does help and it, you know, it's good, so, but it's worth considering, so. Especially as we see things happening more on the south side, you know, too. Awesome. All right, thank you. Next is policy, first reading for financial policies. Did we get comments from anyone about anything on the?
I have received no comments, so unless someone is, wants to verbally give you comments, I have received nothing in writing.
Okay. I will say that there was, I think, some discussion at the finance committee about perhaps having some sort of a executive summary overview on the quantitative pieces of the fin, the financial policy. So, like the way our, the way we've talked about it in the past, especially at town meeting, we're saying, do we meet this comply, you know, are we meeting our percentage of free cash? Are we meeting our percentage of stabilization? What, so laying out, sort of pulling out from the financial policies, that sort of overview of one of those numeric quantitative things that we should be measuring for health insurance trust, OPIP, whatever we have in there to kind of have an overview so that people don't have to read through. It's a long policy now, so. I, I thought that was kind of a good and worthwhile comment, so. Does anybody else have any comments for that first reading? I think the, the only other thing is that I've stated before and it goes back to the sewer, that I still feel that we need some quantitative items on the sewer. Like what should our retaining earnings be? How much are we spending for the budget? You know what, those kind of questions, I think would be helpful. Maybe we do that as kind of a separate policy document from the sewer commissioners that they kind of figure out, so. But other than that, I don't have any comments. I think it was, I think people worked hard on it and it was a subcommittee that had many meetings, so. Do we want to make a motion to move the financial policy to second reading?
It's moved, second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa, to move a financial policy to second reading. Is this what, does this go to town council or is the town council not going to really review this? He's not going to review this, right? And maybe possibly to think of like what could be pulled out and, you know, for an overview if you agree or don't agree. You may comment.
I don't, I actually don't agree. I would rather provide like an index or cross-reference sheet so people, if they want to look, so we can point them directly to the right page. I'm, I don't agree, I don't necess, I'm not necessarily in favor of rewriting it or.
I'm not asking to rewrite it. I'm not asking to rewrite it at all. I'm asking for maybe appendix or something that just says, to pull out the quantitative pieces of it. Not, you know, if you're looking for the quantitative pieces of the financial policy, what, what is this, what is that? Because putting it in the attend, and I'm going to talk about the reserves policy. So, the reserves policy itself has several different numbers. Some of them are in this paragraph, some of them are in that paragraph. I don't know, I, I'll think about what I'm, maybe I, maybe I could.
Or maybe, I, I would prefer to point them to the page in the policy and maybe we bold those or something. I don't want to take them out of context.
No, and I think that's a, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe that makes sense. I'll, I'll be more prepared for the second reading and if I have a comment that's what I have in mind, maybe I'll present that, so. Any comments from the public on Zoom? Okay. All right, so, did we make a motion? Did we have a yes, motion to second?
We just need a vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, suspensions? Move to second reading. It's good to have it laid on a lady. Moving right along. We don't have minutes. Committee reports? I have some, but I'm not going to talk about them. Correspondents?
Select board correspondence for March 19th, 2024. A, DEP letter, final community involvement plan, RCL comments. B, DEP letter, DD property munitions response site plan. C, DEP letter, remedial investigation report for dioxane and all. D, steamship authority parking burden. And E, Kong Keating Partners, affordable housing groundbreaking.
Okay. Future agenda items? Anything come to the head? Okay. Our next meeting is April 2nd, then April 9th, April 16th, and April 30th. Have a wonderful April. And next week is sewer commissioners. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Let's see, unanimous.